And I'm commencing our next, we're going to pray with the pledge.
Also thank you for that, not here, but in the question, question name, your major's word is left, left name again, the only name is also man, they, the silver also do need, so we thank you now for what you've done, that's all. We thank you for what you've done doing, we actually better up under, mission is to, tattoo what's best practice, we thank you now, for thank you also for your, your pleasure and we love you, we give you many, but, and then.
You may go ahead. After I do this, this is going to be the flag of the United States of America, and actually we all got it, for when you're there, on the other hand, America, and this is what we're going to be doing here, for all.
Welcome everyone to our special meeting, um, we will go to item three approval of the F M, Mr. Ramon.
On move.
And I, like I mentioned, yes, in my second page, in the other discussion, if not, all the papers they ask.
Aye.
All opposed, same term, motion carries to aisle number four, the board has set the proposed military rate and budget and the general revenue, and the M S T U front will support your twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Danielle, you want to start?
I will, so tonight we are saying the proposed military rate, so the military rate in the N O line is seven point two four two six million. Can you say that again, seven point two four two six, okay?
Anyway, talk me, that, um, do we want to go ahead and run on this before we have any other discussion?
I guess it's up to the board, but, um, I should have thought to go into maybe some other issues before we actually get out to, to handle that, that hand up.
Yeah, I'm, yes, yes, I belong there right now, but it's okay with the board, I know that I have, um, told him that, um, anyway, this morning, and he has shared some things with me, and I asked her would she share that with the board? Um, also, um, before you share your things, um, tell me, tell us, what positions are, um, required, that, overall, everybody?
Um, okay, so are you new positions?
All new positions.
Okay, so, um, if the board approves the plan for, um, increasing fire coverage county wise, that would be five new firefighter positions total.
Okay.
Three for station one, and two for the C B stations, okay? We also have to unfreeze the position for the second county engineer. Um, and that is all that was requested on the board side, now, it's my understanding that the property appraiser has added a field position.
Okay.
And that, um, the supervisor of elections has added, has basically, I'll call it unfrozen, a position that was vacated two years ago.
Okay.
When one of her, basically, one of her employees retired, and that position was not filled. Um, and then it came to our attention after the last workshop, that there was possible changes from the board, um, on the character class to add an additional deputy.
Okay, so basically, five, six, seven, eight, nine, you might as well say new positions. Okay, all right, keep that in mind, and now, Annie made it to two, okay?
I've got a handout for the board, y'all can pass those down. On the second page is some potential information that I'd like the board to be aware of.
I'm just going to copy this, pass that away.
Okay, this year, you have an additional tax revenue of four hundred and forty-five thousand, seven hundred fifty-nine dollars, and that is due to the increase in taxable value on track. You have other revenue of a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, five ninety-eight, which that revenue comes from tax revenue sharing, and you get a half cent tax for prison population at the Department of Corrections area. Those can fluctuate, you know, it went down quite a bit when they closed the work desk. So you can't depend on the amount of that revenue, that total additional revenue this year is five hundred and eighty-four thousand, three hundred fifty-seven dollars. Now, if you look at the, at the next page, it's the increased expenditure recovered by additional revenue. You're operating with two thirty-three, two thirty-nine, and you look down there at the bottom, uh, with that, um, the additional revenues that were required this year for an increase in your budget.
Let's read that.
Okay, the liability insurance increase was fifteen thousand, six hundred forty-three dollars. You have an affirmative action plan that requires a four thousand dollars of amount every year. Your property insurance or asset, added to the insurance, after y'all had the, uh, survey done, is twenty-five thousand, five hundred and twenty-two dollars. The increase in medical examiner fees is five thousand, one twenty-four. The increase in medays this next budget year is thirty-eight thousand, one ninety-eight. Keep in mind that we voted for last year, and their fiscal year starts July fourth. So you have an additional three months this year to pay, July, August, and September, at the relevant three thousand, one eighty-three seventeen per month. So Danielle will be requesting a budget minimum in August to fund the balance, which is total nine thousand, five forty-nine fifty-one, and y'all know it goes up every year, that matters, okay? You have an increase in state earnings budget of eleven thousand, five hundred and thirty, and the board approved, uh, agreed, that they would fund a new work slot from the Department of Corrections, and would take thirty thousand out of the general revenue. So, in essence, with five eighty-four, three fifty-seven additional revenue, you have extended, in this current budget, five oh seven, four twenty-nine, which leaves you with about of seventy-six thousand, nine twenty-eight. Okay, that is all the money you have left, and the additional revenue of five hundred and eighty-four dollars you got this year, to fund county jobs, and that seventy-six would normally go in your reserve of the season. So if you decide on sheriff's deputy, you have sixty-nine out of that, and that leaves you seven thousand, nine hundred twenty-eight dollars to go into your reserve account, from this year's budget. Okay, y'all, the last year, when you bailed the first budget for last year, you gave three hundred and forty-six thousand, five hundred and seventeen dollars from reserves to baulk your budget. My question is, how long can you continue to baulk your budget from reserves? If you remember when the property appraiser gave your house to the budget, a week or so ago, whenever was? He told you because the change in taxable value on tangible tax is very bummed, and the reason for it is, is because there's appreciation value there, and when it gets appreciated to zero, then the tax returns are zero. So you could see a fifty million dollars decrease in taxable value next year with personal profit, so what does that mean? Your taxable value will probably be zero in time for you next year. So my question is to this board is, how are you going to fund this five hundred and seven thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine dollars next year, if you don't have that additional revenue?
Okay, I've got a question, I wonder, how do you operate, uh, the list down here, uh, of those that listed there, uh, other than the new ones, y'all, does there anything else considered that, uh, could be eliminated?
Well, all these, like the medical exam and medays and that kind of stuff.
That's why I asked, what is it that could be eliminated if we wanted to?
You, it's a matter of how you want to, how you want to fund any potential loss, if we were to have a scam. So if we go back through our asset list and reconsider how much liability we want to take on, I'm assuming we can decrease our premium, but I think that we cut it pretty close. And I think we were very cautious with the, with the formula that we used, anything that was valued under twenty thousand dollars needed not to set the premium. But just trying to get caught up with some of the assets that have zero coverage, um, sometimes coverage, but not enough, but not enough.
Okay, so that's one that could be done.
That's small, because no amount of money is as large as tax payers, it's a small amount, but it's talking about fifteen thousand dollars.
So.
So if you eliminate that, that's not a normal amount of money, yeah, in the value floor.
And I think, well, I did, and the liability insurance increase due to the plans that we filed in the last year, that had.
Oh, yes, yeah. Okay, y'all, let's go up, up to the, um, top section, um, we've got the supervisor of elections for our employee at fifty-nine thousand, three forty-four, and we've got the property appraiser for another staff position of eighty-seven thousand, seven fifty-eight. As far as I'm concerned, I could take, for me, I could take those out, I would rather take a clerical position and put the sheriff's name for a deputy, because that would protect us that if citizens would be getting, I think, more for their money, if I was a clerical people.
I believe, now, I don't want to speak for the supervisor, but, um, my understanding is that it was, it was not only a staff person who was for that position, but wasn't it also for increased cost for an election, a general vote? That's what he put in her request, it's an increase, we have two primary elections next year, and her calls for the security that she has to have.
So how much is this staff person, then, what's this, what's that, what was that taken out?
Of the sixty-nine thousand?
Is that representing, not, or is my, um, um?
Is that not really a new position?
It's not a new position.
Because it's been there and not been filled.
Exactly, for two years, and I.
One month.
Yes, ma'am, and I, I did ask if this was a position that was required, um, due to the banning of one-hundred lawsuit, and she said that for twenty twenty, she received, you know, a variance, basically, um, for, for twenty twenty. So she didn't, she wasn't required to hire someone who was viable, but that, that would be her preference, because.
It would be nice, but, yeah, it's not a position that has to.
Well, and I don't know how long she can, we can hold off without that position, that's, that's just a question right now, because of that lawsuit, from what I understand.
I understand, you hold off until after the twenty twenty, but.
That was.
But I don't know, maybe we'll be done then, right, all the planning takes place.
He's called me this afternoon that he needs a Spanish speaking employee that he's not obligated at this point for twenty twenty.
So would you get, would you sign a little release there, and then a property appraiser, I'm assuming eighty-seven is for one salary?
He said it was for, um, one person, one bill person, as well as the ADA website requirement that he has to do.
But he did break it down into the salary, he didn't want to.
And the same thing, if I'm not mistaken, on the property appraiser, we have to give him what the Department of Revenue approves for him to have, right?
I think I'll be applying that to the board before, so we talk, he submits his budget to the Department of Revenue. If they approve the budget, the board has got a timeline to file an objection to that budget, and then, I understand, there could be adherence of, and you have to go and present the reason why you take the budget at that time. I believe it's running off of the department's, we get anything, something like that, we would certainly do that, and, and the same about it is that, uh, with brief including that ADA, everybody's got a lot of that, I probably can do it, but I can be creative, and I bet, comes up, I gotta do it.
That's, you're an idiot.
And a lot of them have to do something, you know, we got, um, I think a call estimate, I think it was, it's five, six thousand dollars, I would think, or the actual setup, the website, and then, like, fifteen, sixteen thousand, ninety-six years.
Well, the things like that, that we, we have to have, I mean, we can't argue about that, that's, that's, that's something that we have to do, I'm just looking at where we could, you know, trimming a little bit, and, and, by trimming off some clerical, um, positions.
Well, you know, and I, I don't want to get in a debate, but you gotta look at what you funded for some of these folks, the total amount that you actually funded, you know, y'all know what you funded. So, and you have not given some of these officers the ability to reflect on themselves, or whatever they need, whatever they need in an office, so, you know, I would hope the board would take that consideration as well.
Is this emergency management local, is that a, I'm interested, is that a position?
Well, Danielle can explain that.
That is a requirement, emergency management has to have a M A C, a local M A C, and last year, the board, um, voted, I believe they voted to start getting M A Cs in the sheriff's office, because we funded it, you can't fund it anyway, when we had emergency management. And then when the emergency management went up underneath the sheriff's office, we didn't vote it for it, but it came back before the board announced for it.
And that allocation is based on the expenditures that extended through emergency management over the recent working period. So you could have had a, an increase in expenditures, since it lessed the board the cost of being, what, what did you max, what did you?
Thirty-seven, how many? Well, the reason for that was, I can explain that, I think it's a, it's a two or a three-year average, and because a car was purchased, I believe, two years ago, before this, my, to the sheriff's office, a car was purchased out of the local M A C funds, and that increased the amount that we have to, that we only have to fund for a certain number of years. So they take an average of, like, I think it's three years, so for three years, the county M A C has to be at that amount, at that level, we cannot drop it that down. So it has to be at the forty-eight thousand, because it's, it's the average of the three years.
Okay, so this is emergency management M A C, the forty-eight thousand, well, we have emergency management, we pay, we pay that, yeah, now, is it, I'm staffed and equipped, and that's all. Whoever has ownership of the emergency management, are they supposed to, or can just anybody do it? Who is supposed to provide the M A C?
Talk me transferred, that, that is, he, everything.
It wouldn't matter if we asked for it in the budget, it's, it's gotta be funded by the board anyway, so we have, we don't have that.
It's all along the same path, we do that.
Yeah, yeah, because that's like, um, it's, it's.
It's budgeted.
Well, the sheriff's.
Sure.
I thought, well, you know, figure out the personnel part of the supervisor of elections number is rough, and the same with the property appraiser number, personnel part of that. And I ain't cut anybody roots, but it's pretty difficult to find who's paid that person, and the supervisor, the replacement person that's hired two years ago, uh, of course, that would help a little. I'll go ask the bottom line questions, if we don't have any, anybody who likes it, how much reserve do we have left in the reserves?
If you even watch this on the paper, seventy-six thousand.
Don't say you.
We've got to add the sheriff, if you add that, if you add that, it only gives seven thousand, nine twenty-eight to the goods.
Seven thousand, nine twenty-eight, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's the current amount of good in the general fund. Now, we got some reserves, that's the way, general fund, reserves, just put this stuff in the other area. You guys recall about how much?
About three million, is what I'm asking.
And we went, we went into last year's budget, we had three things.
Last year, we went in with one point two.
So we're going to have the.
Well, capital for increments, that's, that's what you have to, after you take your tax carry forward, and you take out your contingency and your tax balance, so with our good deal, and you're designated, what you have left is what you can use for your capital increments, and that's the premium.
While I'm there, and, of course, we come, this comes down, I'm just asking, if, if going in, in, when we finish this up, we'll be going into next year, and it'll help you reserve than we had the year before. It's darkly how much we reserve, it's kind of average, let's trim it up.
I think, I can look back, and I'm pretty sure this has got to tie this band about four, five years, maybe, I have to check, I don't know.
But any questions that can be asked, while we're pending.
Well, let me say, you know, one reason, y'all, like what you said, now, there's a policy, and that hospital has one of few options. If you can help on, because they told you in their presentation, that two hundred thousand, nine, available for cash, that won't let go. And you, if I've got to make a decision, are you to fund up economic development and keeping that hospital, because the two options you have is to, to then cancel the lease, if they operate, and within that three years, I'll set here and we'll have one year. And when you do that, you get in the surplus, so what is going to, you fund four hundred fifty thousand dollars of annual service, and they get that money, plus they collect from insurance, and they, they have fun, and, they tell you they got two ounces, and I think, they said, that most of them have broke down on vacation, going to the work, work environment. And, you know, if we're to make that decision, is whether you want to continue with the hospital, and I don't know what you're going to do, but that three thousand dollars for search, three million dollars reserves may not last long, if you have to do something to help them sell. Now, my next issue is, T D G S, I understand there's about seventy-six thousand dollars left in their money, you can prove it to a hundred thousand dollars for them, but if you're holding that cash.
I asked you to hold it, I asked you to hold it, right?
Yeah, if we were to ask the board to prove it, y'all put us in the middle, and you want to do that, we still have it, and when somebody tells us what we will release, but right now, they only have seventy-six thousand dollars. They got the issues, they told you they were trying to hire a new executive director, and it wasn't on the case, isn't that what y'all said?
I'd love to play that, and they're up.
I don't have any idea, but when you take that, and see, I'm, T D G S, this board does, we give it a hundred thousand dollars, the CD is not fixed, and all we have to do, I think, they got is maybe the office lease and, okay? And maybe a lease, and I think it's probably the CD period on the water, I got, but I'm not sure.
I, I don't know, get it open, and I have, we got the issue, we got, we got a meeting tomorrow, I can't pour y'all, get a wipe out now, we got criticized for laying out that.
I, I, I put it in the back, and my whole point is, that the board's put a hundred thousand dollars in there from now, T D G S. What still happens, when they hire a new executive director, they have an attorney on the same, and all this, and they don't have a hundred thousand dollar deposit, what is going to happen? Y'all need to keep that in mind, you got two, John E T says, that to beat up that three million dollars, you better beat each other to it.
Well, you don't know what's going to happen with the intangible, and you don't know when there's going to be, um, a disaster, you don't know, um, you know, having the past, we've had to go into reserves about the budget, so, you know, if I stated, um, in the beginning, uh, we don't need to let that, um, money, uh, act like we, that money's running a hole in our pocket.
Right.
And I know it comes across that we have a lot of money, and it is healthier than we have before, I think we need to be very conservative, um, I, I, I think we need to be very conservative, and, you know, every position that is approved is recurring, it won't go away next year, that's why I want to be.
Except for the five thousand, so that, if that, that'd be funded out of, out of the law on tax increase, if you keep that minimums thing, it will pretty much, you know, it will be considered as a recurring revenue.
Well, you operate, it's, they don't be really hurting, because your liability insurance will not go down, um, if you freeze the thirty thousand of the work slots, I'll even just do it in one year, next year, you don't have money to go to that. Well, those kind of things is, and you don't have any control of some of them, the work slot is a contract, so it's normally for, um, I, you know, it's not year to year, but it's not a long-term contract, so, and, so if that contract were to come to fruition, it's for either two or three years.
And so it's, it's not, it's not like hiring an employee on, that, that you have year after year after year after year, or new positions.
I'm more concerned about salaries, and it's recurring, and then if I have to pick and choose, um, I want our citizens to be protected, and that to put in a more clerical people, we can do without clerical people, we can do without another deputy, but, you know, we're out there, we're sure about the time, we see it, we know about it, and it is what helps. Why, what is the, um, what is the current crime rate right now for county counties?
Uh, I didn't bring that in, ma'am, I, I'm sorry.
To calculate that. To calculate that.
Have to, yeah.
Okay, so if, if we do approve, you're getting another deputy, I want to know what the crime rate is now, and next year, I want to see that number come down.
Well, it came down from last year, I do know that, the crime rate came down from last year to this year, and we would have just, like, we keep tied ahead, and that, that aren't trends going down, so.
Because we all hear, when we're out in our district, we, you know, we hear about the crime a lot.
All day long.
And, and so that's kind of where I am, if we've got to pick and choose, we can do without clerical, yes, it would be nice, then, I want people in your office to help you, I don't disagree with that, but, um, you know, when we're looking at trying to keep a hospital open potentially, and, um, you know, just want us to be very careful.
I, I agree with what you said, I, I think, so, of course, more important, right now, is clear, can I speak to the office?
No, probably not.
In this budget, we have allocated, let's call it parts to make, over four hundred thousand dollars, twenty-five percent of the one cent, three of six, uh, and that can only be used for capital allocation, and it was my hope, that with this, and then, and this is three years now, that we've talked about, that holds together, that's over a billion dollars, like a million and a quarter. And it was my hope that, that, that we take the pressure off of the hospital, from having to buy a couple of equipment, and that would pretty much be money for operations, couldn't that, is that too much to, I'm a dream in there, but.
I think that might be a little bit different, right, because I think I've got that on revenue side, which is what we're trying to do, is, is, is hiring a lot of, 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 and we can save for operations.
Well, I'm sure, let's hope the hospital doesn't have to put time on the front door together, let's play the wrong, do the board catch it. I don't believe it's what we got.
We close, yeah, we wouldn't have one.
Yep. I don't know, the day when we were talking, we were talking about two position or higher position, one.
It's, it's two positions, however, it's five employees, so what we're trying, so one twenty-four seven coverage is three positions, it's three shifts per position, per. It's three shifts per position, per twenty-four hours, or how, however. So to, to make, beat a twenty-four seven station, that would take two additional employees, we have one there now. To add a position to station one, so that's, so that would be available to the entire county for response, that's three fireplaces.
So with two, I won't be running like that. I won't be running with, 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 we don't know how long it is running. We never had this thing, we were used to that.
We have, so T and B has been a volunteer station as long as I can remember. So this would basically be adding a position, you know, as, making T and B fire station twenty-four seven.
And that's two positions.
That's two positions, two people. And then for the additional coverage for the rest of the county, that would be adding a fire, you know, a firefighting position to station one, which is three employees.
All of this firefighting stuff is not going to affect.
No. No, it's really not, no, that's, that's my opinion.
And I, I, I appreciate the convention.
Um, everybody needs to, yeah, everybody needs to clarify. And the more we can get it out, the more clarity we can get out, the more people see, they understand it, so. You know, if they just go, everything, the county that's got ten positions out there, they want ten people, all of their own, all have much to get something on the behind, all stuff. You know, and, and they don't understand, it, it takes, it takes people to do what? You know, and, and they don't, they just do, we enough to do. Well, if I knew, um, he's been on like, he F.D.O., they don't, it's like fire, they go to rec to help people out, and rec, and I, if I was in a rec, I would want to see what, what, what help I ever helped, even help my family, help my friends. And I think all of us want that, so. Even in doing that, sometimes we have somebody voted to say, we need to something. And I think that's been the board's prediction, we need to help the hospital a little bit. And in that, I thought I heard two fire trucks or two animals, we've talked about four hundred coming out, and all you can get is about one?
Well, we got two, well, we got, actually, we got three, we want out. Well, that's four hundred and something thousand, you can buy, you can buy, what do you need animals cost?
Oh, around two hundred thousand.
Around two hundred thousand, you can buy two one years.
One one year, one the next?
Yeah.
How about the lease, have y'all looked in the lease, officer?
Uh, finally looking into that.
Is that it?
Yeah. Uh, so. This boy, the sheriff, the sheriff said T.C.V.A., I know we don't have somebody that looking out for, out ahead. If they ever stop, then start going back, it ain't them fault. Now, we, maybe we've been small a little bit to the world. Because we've had somebody in D.D.C.D.A. that, you know, whether it's productive or not, but we went from nothing to trying to have something. I believe in D.D.C.D.A. I got four kids, none of them there working yet. You know, it, well, they like to, they, they have professionals, get something else, you don't have it. What do we want to do? Do you want to, try to bring some jobs in? Or do you want to do that, of course? Or do nothing? I don't think we want to say that. And I don't mind what I'm telling, look, I think we need certain things to make this county work, both counties got it. And the counties that don't have it, we know what they're doing, they're running the state to work. I can tell you right now, I know a couple of counties right now, run the state of counties work, that we can come to jobs like we just had. But they're up there doing nothing, and we're finding, and they're doing great.
And using our good office, too.
Yes. Uh, we're, we're in bad position, hey, you gonna do the best you can, whoop your guys, it's just cutting a little bit. Uh, we got, might not be able to cut.
Mr. Mr., until people have sat in our seat, you can sit out there, and you can say all kinds of things, so until you sit here, and you know it's different. And, and I think that you're right, I think we have to send a message to the public that I think that we're, that we're, we're, we're going to be good stewards of their money. And we're going to kind of put the money where it's needed. That's not clerical, that's in stock protection, that's in law enforcement. That's what we need to put, that's what we need to put in our money.
Yeah, I agree with you, safety is clerical, and if we don't have the sheriff's department, a hospital, or a fire department, we have no community. But that's what I mean.
Now, I have a question on our engineer. How much money have we spent in the past year on outside engineering compared to what one thousand will cost us?
We spent a hundred and, almost a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars a year to, uh, from twelve eighteen to seven nineteen in that quarter.
That's enough, that, that's enough, seven months, seven right now. It was said, how much?
A hundred and forty-seven thousand, two eighty-seven sixty.
And the, and the salary of a full-time engineer is what? I know the, the range is what?
Um, well, depending on the interns they have, I would say we're, you know, it's about, about.
Yeah, what they have in the budget?
Yes, sir. So my half of what we've, we've been spending, I think it has somebody on staff that would, that would provision all, uh, work, and, and that's the cost.
Now, I will say that part of what we've extended is for surveying, that's about twenty-five percent of it, from what I understand. And when I go with Kenneth about any possibility of receiving any of those funds back in revenue. He did say that there was a mechanism in which we can, we can invoice V.O.P. for part of the design and engineering. I don't have an exact figure, and I hate to speculate, but part of those funds can be recovered as we work on road process. And another function that our engineer has that we never talk about very much is they maintain, maintains our D.I.S. database. Which, now, already, we've come in along, but the maintenance of that D.I.S. database is very important in terms of nine-one-one everything.
Absolutely.
And I, and he spends, I think, at, at least four hours a week maintaining that database. And that's something that we've always had a very good working relationship with nine-one-one, and he does that in addition to all the inherent work that we have.
Bottom line, it will put it for us to hire a full-time engineer than to continue the way we've been doing, I believe so, okay.
We, we, we still in a workshop, right?
No, yeah, that's the reason.
We're in the, you mean?
Is Julie, you have any input?
I think we need another full-time engineer, you know, I really do. If we can play that amount of money, twenty-four thousand dollars over four, fifteen now, and they said twenty-five cents survey, and that's going to, that surveying one time, and I would, you know, with a profit. But, thank you.
Any other, what do we have?
I'd rather the money be in that account than, than somebody's mouth, I mean.
Anything else before we go back to heading the mill, Rex? Uh, okay, the, for the general, um, um, the proposed unit that the board needs to, uh, adopt, gives seven point two four two six in the revenue. Do you need a motion or a second to do that?
Motion, six.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discharges? If not, all the charges, aye?
Aye.
All the charges taken time, motion, sheriff, now for the M.S.T.U.
What was talking about?
Yes.
Let's get straight, what that mean on a hundred thousand dollars? Wait a second.
The M.S.T.U. is, knowing rate, um, one point four zero one zero.
One point four zero?
One zero.
Now, if it's one six three, you can increase, and if you were to hire five, 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 five?
Correct.
Which equates to four hundred thousand dollars, fourteen dollars.
No, twenty-three, twenty-three.
Twenty-three dollars?
Two dollars a month.
All right, if we went the other route and hired two positions or two for fire service?
That would have your knowing rate go up to one point six six five, right?
Which would be how much a year on a hundred thousand dollar house?
Six dollars.
Six dollars. So six dollars for twenty-four?
That's correct.
Twenty-three. If you twenty-three dollars a year, a year for a hundred thousand dollar house, over six dollars. You need two people or you get back? Can you pull it?
Uh, I can't, I think we have to announce to the, um, community to play, to agree, is that the M.S.T.U. is for all these unincorporated, unincorporated areas of the town.
Right. Okay, so in the next, yeah, again, M.S.T.U. five employees is one point four.
Four five with a zero, one zero, one point. Which is an increase, um, is it an increase of point two three three three? Is there a motion? Is there a motion for the M.S.T.U. at one point four, or do I want to leave it? A motion? Okay, anyone else want to go out another option?
I lose for M.S.T.U. one point two two five six, please. Which is cost six dollars per year on a hundred thousand dollar house. And that's a two, five, five.
Which would be five people? Oh, two, two, oh, oh, two bodies, right, two bodies.
Two bodies, two, two people.
Okay, one of your page has made a motion for the M.S.T.U. to be at one point two two five six.
I'll take it, yeah.
And we have a second by committee for me, and this is an increase of how much? It's zero, not six, gone, one point two two five zero.
One point two two five zero.
Zero, okay, and then an increase of how much, a point zero five seven three, what, zero five seven three?
Five dollars, seven three, six, four, hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, any, any other questions, any other? It's not, all in favor of the M.S.T.U. at one point two two five zero, say aye?
Aye.
All the same time, motion, sheriff. Now, uh, calculate the, the vote for the, uh, animal, because we are now, so we're going to vote for the general unit, uh, the county's already six four five. Animal goes to. Eight point four six seven six.
Eight point four.
Eight point six seven six, yeah. Okay, and that concludes the special meeting that you know it is your motion to adjourn, wait a minute, to, to file a transcript, you got one?
Just to let everybody know, the steel process has been changed in the coming year, and so once I get a law process in, bottom line, I'll, we'll use an updated summary. The first public hearing is set September ninth, but it is, it's on Monday, September ninth, at five oh one.
That's just by a minute. We declared in this budget, there was one deputy chair. We kept the position that's been identified by the property president. We kept the position that's been identified by the, uh, supervisor license. We kept the engineering position. And with other two five dollars. That's what came, Mark.
I thought we were, so, was I the only one advocating to eliminate the, uh, clerical position?
Well, that's something to talk about, that's.
Well, I, I think, what you didn't talk about, you have a chance now, between now and your first public hearing, you go back in the white sports, and you can decide what you're going to do. And there's a one D.O. sign, you can move that E. R. C. and what have you, so it doesn't affect the mill.
What we voted on today is strictly on the, according to the mill. So what we do with the budget could still be different than what we talked about.
The public hearing will be in August, on September.
On September the ninth, will we have public hearings?
So on September the ninth, we can, uh, leave it in there or take it out. Now, if we take it out, it won't change the general fund, will it?
Correct, definitely, correct.
But what, what would we do with that money? Is put it in the reserve. All right, I'm just, that's going to matter here.
Yes, the one, the second, the second public hearing will be the following Monday, September sixteenth, at five oh one. And I will run the ad in the paper the Friday, and we plan on September thirteenth.
And I'm going to go back, and the first public hearing is September the ninth, at five oh one. And the second public hearing is September the sixteenth, at five oh one. And today, we're voting to, um, for the millage, the total millage will be eight point four six seven six. Any, anything else before we adjourn, um, right first? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I don't think there is. I, I just wanted to clarify, the sheriff, he thought I was stopping here, but he had to be a conference, a sheriff conference. So he put it all night, so do I tell him he'd be included in that position as of now?
As of today, yes, we have.
Okay, thank you.
Did I have a money to put, yes?
Hey, is there anybody else calling on this in the book? I have a sound, if you want to put it up. If you don't, thank you. My dear sheriff, say.
Always better say aye.
Aye, aye, aye. Good job.